All right, we'll call the meeting to order. And I don't believe we have a minister present tonight, so we'll just have a minute, a moment of silence, please. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch.
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Cobal?
Here.
Mr. Logstine?
Here.
At this time, we will hopefully entertain a motion to appoint two new junior council members. I'm going to let Sarah explain to the audience what the junior council members are here for, and then we'll hopefully have a motion.
So last year, we started a program for our high school students to be able to participate on council. So that's our junior council person program. We have an opening for one senior and one junior to sit with us and learn what council is all about. So they participate in council meetings, the two meetings we have per month. They are able to participate in other activities that council has going on. The only thing they're not able to do is vote with us or sit in on executive sessions. So we encourage them to learn all they can while they're here. It is a semester appointment, and then they'll have the opportunity, if they want to stay with us for the second semester of the year, to be able to do that, or if they're ready to move on, then we'll open applications again at that point. And so we had a very successful round in the spring of junior council members, and so we're ready to bring on two new council members for fall. And so they're here with us tonight, and so I'm going to make that motion that we appoint our two new junior council members.
Which would be Aiden Stover and Chloe Watkins. Second. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Logstine?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. So at this time, we'll have both of them come forward and do the swearing in.
Chloe, first. Chloe, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chloe Watkins, do solemnly pledge.
I do, I, Chloe Watkins, do solemnly pledge.
That I accept the position of Titusville City Junior Council Member.
That I accept the position of Junior City Council Member.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
Observe city council meeting rules.
Observe city council meeting rules.
And actively participate in city council discussions.
And actively participate in city council discussions.
I pledge to fairly and honestly perform and discharge. That's okay. I pledge, I pledge to fairly and honestly perform and discharge.
I pledge to...
I'm sorry, I'll do a little, I'll cut the words out. I pledge to fairly.
I pledge to fairly.
And honestly perform and discharge.
And honestly perform and discharge, sorry.
That's okay. The duties incumbent on me.
Do the duties incumbent on me.
As a junior member.
As a junior member.
Of the Titusville City Council.
Of the Titusville City Council.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations. Aiden, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aiden Stover, do solemnly pledge.
I, Aiden Stover, do solemnly pledge.
That I accept the position of Titusville City Junior Council Member.
That I accept the position of Titusville City Junior Council Member.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
Observe city council meeting rules.
Observe city council meeting rules.
And actively participate in city council discussions.
And actively participate in city council discussions.
I pledge to fairly.
I pledge to fairly.
And honestly perform.
And honestly perform.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As a junior member.
As a junior member.
Of the Titusville City Council.
Of the Titusville City Council.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
Congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, we ask both of you to take a seat at the table. So tonight, for those of you who weren't at our last meeting, one of our council members, Jason Drake, bought a home outside of the city limits and has moved into it, and so he tendered his resignation. The original date was going to be effective tomorrow, and he changed that to yesterday because we had put out applicant, requested applications that were due last Friday. Did, opened it to interviews yesterday, and tonight, we're going to move forward. And we have William McCrillis with us, and so would someone like to make a motion, entertain a motion, to bring him on to council? I'm making a motion to bring him on. Okay?
I'll second that.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Logstine?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. So we need to square him in as well.
Have I seen you before?
Yeah.
Bill, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I would discharge the duties.
I would discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Office of my fidelity.
Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
Well, you're done with that, but we've got a seat for you up here, Bill. Welcome back. All right, at this time, we will, we got electronic copies of the previous meeting minutes. Everybody has those, and would we like to entertain a motion to accept these as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second that. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Logstine?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, we have approval of operational reports. We'll start with the manager's report and a business spotlight.
Yes, the senior council and junior council members as well. Added to the manager's report this week is a business spotlight. We have Megan Dodd here on the Salty Spa. Megan, if you'd like to come forward, please. All ears.
All right, my name's Megan Dodd. I have a business in Meathville on Park Avenue, right down in Meathville, looking to expand to the Titusville location. Currently, I have a location on Central Avenue, looking to move over to Spring Street. Very new in the works, so I know when you know what's talking to me about this, I was like, oh, this is very, very good, so. It's going to be more of like a gift store. The one, the location I have in Meathville is a boutique that does center around the female demographic. However, the Titusville location is going to be focused more on a gift shop that will focus more on all different types of demographics. As I am the only owner and the worker, it will be more of a pop-up shop in the Titusville location, which means that it will be available Saturday evenings and then Sunday days to start out. Definitely, we'll be looking to hire down the road, but that's where we're already starting out. So we have to stay tuned for more information on that.
And do you know where you're going to be at on Spring Street yet?
Yes. It's going to be the old, it's 112 Spring Street, West Spring Street, the old distillery.
Okay.
Yep.
And your, and your hours for now will be Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, the hours will be five to eight on Saturday, and then Sundays are going to be 12 to 5, you know, those hours. And then obviously, once the man picks up, we'll look to open the hours how further. The issue is, is that right now with the business in Meathville, I'm the owner and the only employee, so it kind of makes it hard to have two separate locations, and so you're able to hire. But definitely would like to do prime off hours, especially coming towards the holidays when people are looking to do a lot of their shopping, and a little bit different, non-traditional hours, where you're catching a lot of the people that are no longer, you know, at home from work.
Sure.
On the weekends. A lot of places aren't traditionally open on Sundays, so it'll be some place for someone to go to do a little bit of shopping, maybe Saturday evening, and then Sunday days as well.
And do you have a Facebook page?
I do, the Salty Spa. Right, it's 890 Park Avenue, but yes, the Salty Spa, just go right on Facebook, always posting on there. Maybe a little too much sometimes. That's what you have to do when you have any business, so.
Very well. Any other questions, council, head for it. Welcome to the community.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Next, council, we have a special event request from the YWCA Turkey Tribe. This will be an event happening on November 24th from 9:00 a.m. to about 9:45 a.m. This is something they have each, each and every year, Thanksgiving morning, it's a 5K that primarily stays on Walnut Street. Ashley English heads this event, which is, I can tell you, I live on Walnut, off Walnut Street, and they have many, many participants each and every year for that. So this, she does have, the course starts in the corner of Walnut and Washington, goes down to Burgess, then Walnut to Third Street, back to the YWCA, for an end, it's about 45 minutes long. We do have a certificate of liability insurance with the City of Titusville as an additional insured. They're not requesting anything else from the city, and I'm looking for council's approval for this event.
But you already approved it, you're just telling us about it?
You're right, yes. This is, I don't need your approval.
Okay.
We're just going to do it anyway.
No, no, I mean, yeah.
I'm just so used to it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us, okay?
Next, I just want to provide a brief update on the Diamond Street Park. I know we've been talking about it every, every council meeting about where we're at. We were hoping that this park improvement was going to start back on September 1st. Talking with Terra Works out of Clary, and they were obviously waiting on materials, some other things as well. They did provide us, and I'll provide to council, a protected timeline on what they, when they're going to have things started and finished. Just to kind of quickly go through, it looks like excavation grading and utility work will start on the 10th, so next Monday. Concrete work will also start next week, fixtures and lighting will start the week after, landscaping will start the week after, and they'll continue on through. It appears that they'll have most of the work done by November 1st, but they do have some electrical stuff they'll be working through for the first couple of months of, obviously, the new year, hooking that up. So again, that'll be starting, I'll pass this around.
Okay.
So you have a copy of this document. Next, sidewalk ordinance status. Been working with our solicitor here, as council recalls at the last meeting, we were talking about incorporating, whether it was an ordinance or some kind of a, something in requirement for when a house sells in the city, our code enforcement officer goes down and checks the downs and outs of the property. The question was, could part of that inspection be the sidewalks? So Tim, I don't know, not to put you on the spot, but I guess for you to consider reading your email, you could certainly...
So the question was whether we can require sidewalks to be upgraded at the time of transfer of home, and the third-class city code does not give you that power.
Okay.
Third-class city code limits your power to do a review of sidewalks to ensure that they're a good repair. Your current city code that you have in place now is compliant with the third-class city code. You could go through an inspection program right now, require people to upgrade them as, as necessary, but you do not have the power to require that upon transfer of them.
So he could, our code enforcement, he or she, could inspect the sidewalks when they were there doing the rest of the inspections, when the title transfers, they just can't make it a report?
We cannot make it a requirement to the transfer, that is correct. I would recommend that anytime that we engage in any comprehensive inspection program, that we have a written policy listing when and what, what triggers an inspection, so that we're not ever, claims never made that we're being arbitrary and capricious to determine who's getting an inspection. But yes, we do have those current powers.
Okay. So that would be something to be discussed at a later date, because we certainly have a lot of pretty bad sidewalks.
Yeah. Certainly.
Okay.
And just to add to, we're obviously have somebody set aside for sidewalks, we're looking at some other funding sources as well. So certainly make that up.
Thank you.
Next, just a reminder to the public of our budget meetings. We started meeting yesterday with department heads at City Hall. Again, I just want to reiterate to the public, we have several budget workshops on Mondays and Tuesdays. Obviously, tonight with our council meeting, next week it'll be Monday and Tuesday, the following week, Monday, and then a Monday and Tuesday. So again, just encouraging the public to come out, hear about city budget, how we get the numbers we get, and the decisions that are made. So again, I just want to put that up in the public.
And those are 5:00 p.m.?
Those are at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall, yeah. Next, just briefly, community calendar, just refer everybody to the community calendar. Tap into titusvillepa.com for the events that are going on in the community, not only the Turkey Tribe, but other events happening at Ironworks. Historical Society has events going on as well. Again, just putting that website out there for folks to reference for the events happening in and around Titusville. Next, briefly, just want to advise council, we have a recycling act 902 grant that's become available. This grant actually was applied for and approved to the city back in, end of 2019, for the recycling facility out at near our waterworks. That grant supplies with the building fencing around to start a recycling facility. The grant is back open again, and the city is going to be applying for this funding for the recycling facility. This month is a 10% match, we can use land property as the match as well. Talking with Chris Ruffner, our public works director, Chris is interested in a horizontal grinder, it's like a tub grinder. Basically, folks at this facility will be taking their yard waste down there anyhow. The yard waste would go in this machine, and out the other end would be beautiful mulch. We think it'd be a great asset for the community. Obviously, this grant would pay, it's a very, it's an expensive piece of equipment, it's about 55,000 pounds. But again, I think it would be a great asset to the community as a way to supply free mulch for everybody in the community to use, and obviously dispose of the yard waste. So this is a grant that would be, should be an acceptable piece of equipment for that grant. Again, that grant opens up.
It's open.
It needs to be turned in by the end of the month, and we probably won't know until next year at some point.
Fifty-five thousand pounds?
Yeah.
But that's not the price? The price is probably very expensive.
The price is right around 600,000.
Yeah? But it's, it's a grant cover?
Yes.
Yes. And the match is, obviously, the land, and the land has increased, obviously, since we put a building and improved that area, so. I'll pass this through. It's a pretty neat piece of equipment.
Then that will also allow us to count that yard waste as our tiny shed for recycling as well.
Ah, Heather?
I think we do, I think we'd be attracted to that now.
Okay.
Okay.
Tim is going to update council, we had a case that had started against the city several years ago before all of us were here, and Tim's going to give an update on that, if we move through the report system on an old case.
So there's a case known as Stephanie Green, the Larry Manross, former city manager of Titusville, in the federal court, the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. I'm not going to tie the ball here, the city won the case, but I want to let you know what was going on, because it did precede everybody involved. In that particular case, we had a resident, Ms. Green, and a Mr. Restivo, who had identified a property that was previously owned, that property by a resident. That property had severe problems, the city, in agreement with the property owner, demolished the back end of the house, and then sealed up the house. Shortly thereafter, Ms. Green and Mr. Restivo accessed the home, the court case says, threw a hole in the wall, and then began letting in there, and they were basically squatting. And your city code and department officer at that time began efforts to have them evicted from the home, because it was unsafe, not only due to the condition of the home with demolition of the back end, but also because of the exposure of electrical wires, plumbing and such, that was left in the property. That went on for a period of time. It got to the point where the police chief and an officer were involved in removing the people from the home, and they consistently went back into the home during that time, and it just seems like it was an absolute mess. At the end of the period of time, however, Ms. Green and Mr. Restivo ended up buying the property from the county repository, because it did go up for tax sale. And then they sued the city, saying that you had violated their rights under various code provisions and constitutional amendments, and that foreclosed on their ability to use the property that was theirs, and that they had a right to use.
Okay.
And what the judge, federal judge came down and said was, that none of that was true, that they were squatting in that property, that the city was engaging in the property use of its powers to try to protect them, the public, from having access to a property that was unsafe. And finally, after six years or so, the case, five years or so, the case was dismissed in whole. On summary judgment, congratulations.
Thank you. Okay?
Thank you, Tim. Lastly, council, quickly, quick church run update. We put our press for proposals, our P's out to the local newspapers last week. The closing date on that is October 31st. That is for a qualified engineering firm to assist with the development of a flood mitigation plan for church run. We've already had several calls from different engineers asking questions. We actually have an engineer, a potential engineer coming up on Friday to visit the site, wants to get some pictures. I'll be meeting with him, just to show him the area, so we're moving forward with that as well, as I'll start that process. With that, council, that concludes my main report.
Okay. I just have a quick question, going back to the, to the community calendar.
Yes.
So I've had a couple of people ask me about Halloween and trick-or-treating, because we moved that to actually, the 31st last year, and people were, are confused as to whether it's going to be that this year. Can we just put that on the community calendar?
Yeah, certainly.
So that people know that it's...
Yes, and so we don't have to, we don't have to bring it up as a motion this year, I think, because we made a resolution for good.
Right.
Every year, it used to be a resolution.
Right, so people are just confused as if it was going to be the same.
I have written that, too. It's Monday, it falls on Monday this year.
Yes. We actually got calls, too, confirming that, so.
So if you could get it on the community calendar, that would be great, and we can...
And just to put it, since we're being videoed, what's the times on it, again?
Six to 7:30.
Thank you. Okay, so do I hear a motion to accept the manager's report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Logstine?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. So we have no minutes on boards tonight. Anybody have any council committee updates at this time? We'll have to look at our, Heather, when you have time, maybe send an email to us, see what's open, we can put Bill on a couple. Hey, Mayor.
I just wanted to add, the Plaine Commission is going to be meeting this week to go over the plans for Taco Bell. We've had a lot of folks calling asking about Taco Bell, and it's still, still coming into town. It needs to go in front of the Plaine Commission first. It will eventually make it to council for a vote as well.
Okay.
They are going to be discussing that this week.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we open it up to public participation pertaining to agenda items. Five-minute timeline for individual speaker, just let us know whether you're a resident, non-resident, taxpayer, a business owner, or what your association is with the town. Old business tonight will be second readings of council bill number four and number five. Number four is about the alternate parking, and number five is to repeal our dog kennel ordinance. We have, we're having a discussion on our refuse changes. Our new business will be approving our crossing guard MOU with the school district. Discussion of condemned property, 136 to 140 Diamond Street, not to be confused with the park. And resolution number seven about our CDVG application. Do we have anybody that wants to give public participation about that now? All right, we'll move along on this then. Our second reading of council bill number four, if you just want to hit the highlights, please.
Yeah, I'll read the ordinance first. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending certain sections of codified ordinances of the City of Titusville, including section 521.02, emergency no parking authorized, publication of notice, providing spareability and an effective date. Essentially, this is, the mayor may order an emergency parking restriction by issuing an emergency declaration due to anticipated flooding, excessive snowfall, natural or mainly disaster or other catastrophe. Prior to issuing such an emergency declaration, the mayor shall consult with the city manager for recommendations as to which, if any, streets, roads, avenues, or highways should be subject to emergency parking restrictions. The emergency declaration shall contain the names of those streets, roads, avenues, or highways, and the times and dates during which parking shall be restricted due to the emergency. The city manager shall cause citizens and residents to be notified of the parking restrictions that are subject to the mayor's emergency declaration. Notification will be made, electronic notification, city's website, social media, signage as well, placing signs along the streets, roads, and avenues. And that pretty much sums it up.
Okay. And is there any way that we possibly, if this second read passes, that we could put this in some kind of form? I don't know if we should put it out with the water bills or what we should, just so people have something in front of them that maybe makes it a little bit for the layperson that they could understand a little better? How do we do that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we could probably put an insert in the water bill.
Like a condensed version?
Maybe, I don't know if we're putting anything, anything in November, but at least...
The leave pickup is November.
Leave pickup is November.
December, December, we could put in.
Yeah.
What's, what's...
Yeah, certainly, good.
Do I hear a motion to accept the second, and do the second reading of this ordinance 3289?
I'll go ahead and watch. I'll second that.
Right? Any questions from, you guys are just here, the first night, but basically, instead of having signage that affects periods of the year, we're only going to do it on emergency basis when there's a big snowfall. Call the roll, please, Heather.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Logstine?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yeah.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Our second reading of council bill number five, and that would be repealing the dog kennel.
Yes, council, this is an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, repealing certain sections of codified ordinances of the City of Titusville, including section 705.6, seizure and impounding authorized, section 705.7, impounding licensed dogs, notice to owner, redemption and disposition, section 705.8, impounding unlicensed dogs, redemption and disposition in section 705.9, records and monthly report by police department, providing spareability and an effective date. As council is aware, the city has a current dog ordinance in place where there's a dog kennel that is operated by the city. Obviously, that dog kennel's been out of existence for many years. Permits are involved in having that dog pound. It just makes more sense, obviously, to change the way we're doing things with dogs. Our police department are going to continue to deal with the aggressive dogs. Certainly encouraging folks, if they come across an aggressive dog, they call, still call the city police department. We have added a phone number and easy link on our city website for folks that find a stray dog. It's a number to the Crawford County Dog Catcher, Dog Warden, Sam Fuller. And we also are encouraging folks, if they find a stray dog, it seems like now they put it on Facebook. It's amazing how quickly those dogs are usually, they get back to their regular owner.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to move forward on the second reading of council bill number five?
I'll make a motion that we approve council bill number five.
Second.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Logstine?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, we're going to have a, more discussion on the refuse changes and things surrounding that, so. If you want to start that out.
Yeah, council, I wanted to just, I wanted to put this on the agenda, obviously, with the changes we've had from going from rack and refuse to tri-county, obviously, the big changes we have going on with containers. This past few weeks, we've been quite busy at City Hall. We had prepared a letter to get it out to folks advising on the change. Obviously, tri-county has, the way they do things with containers, they certainly are trying to make it more efficient for them, and more efficient for us as well, as we're very grateful, obviously, that they're taking on the city and the 2,100-plus customers that we have for garbage pickup. So we had a lot of questions come in from a lot of residents, a lot of concerns as well. Something we've been working on, as residents are used to, that live on alleys, are used to putting their garbage on the alleys. Tri-county would like to have it so those residents, if their frontage is actually on a main street, they like to have it, have the garbage on the main street. Obviously, it's difficult, and some of our alleys are very narrow. It's a very large truck that goes down through the alleys to try to, try to put that arm out... out on the passenger side and let it can up and dump it. So that's a challenge for them. We're certainly are working with those folks. We have some folks that live in the alley that, whether it's, they're elderly, they're just not able, they have disability issues as well, they're not able to, to wheel their garbage around the house and come out front. So we're working with those folks. So I think it's important just tonight, I was actually hoping we'd have some folks here. We had a lot of folks that were upset with the change. I encouraged them to come to the council meeting and share their thoughts and concerns and obviously for us to, to reiterate, you know, the process and, and, you know, the way we're, we're doing things. So again, I just wanted to have it on the agenda for discussion because there was some question. There's question about recycling as well, recycling being every other week. In the letter that we prepared to all the residents, we supplied them a calendar for the, for the year, the holidays. We actually today got returned probably 90 pieces of mail that were identified as vacant or undeliverable. Looking at a lot of those, they actually, some of these places are vacant for a month and then somebody's in, a new resident is in there. So we know a lot of folks didn't get their mail and aware of the changes. So again, I just wanted to have that out there to reiterate the changes the city's making and certainly we're trying to work with these folks and concerns and questions.
The change on the schedule going forward for the record?
Yes.
Is half the city's picked up on Tuesday?
Yes.
And the other half is on Wednesday?
That's correct.
Except on during the holiday weeks. The, the other two things I have written down here to remind people set on the record that I think one of the last times Tim was here with us, when we discussed, you know, trying to come up with an emergency, to declare a state of mercy, et cetera, was to not get too optimistic about finding a solution. And I want to remind people that we went through 16 different companies before we found a solution and we were willing to accept a few months to get started and we were able to get a two-year contract. And with that, there was some restrictions and people are having some anxiety about the 96-gallon container. Some people are. A lot of people really like it, but I would just like to, to remind people that the city ordinance is you put your garbage out after 5:00 PM the day before. And people have been getting ahold of me, I don't know if other people have been contacted, just asking people that after your garbage is picked up, to take the container away in a timely manner, that not leave it out there all week for you to carry your garbage out to it because that's not what the intention was.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I may comment?
Yes.
Just up the road in the rural city in Erie County, they have sent out an RFP for garbage service once. They received no bids. They put the garbage RFP out a second time and have received no credible indication that they're going to receive a bid a second time. So the City of Titusville is doing just fine in terms of your garbage collection.
That's what I said to the one person, they, they said, you're right. I said, I'm just glad we have something. Because I guess some of those communities, if I'm correct, they have roll-offs that people can carry their garbage to.
Yeah.
So thank God we don't have that. So these are minor issues, I think.
And just, I've noticed now that, that everybody has their containers and now that's how they're picking them up. So I know there's some growing pain to where people are going to keep their containers and so they've been kind of here and there, but now that people have rolled them out to the curb, that looks so much neater and nicer than just bags and stuff on everybody's curb. So hopefully, as everybody gets used to that, it'll, you know, it, the city will, will look nicer even on garbage day with those out there, so.
And just to add, so we have some challenges. Brook Street is a great example, as you climb the hill, the angle of 20-some houses on that, where they're going to put their, their container. We looked at that today on a map. There's, if you put it on the sidewalk, which, you know, you're not supposed to walk sidewalk, it's too far for the arm to reach. So we're trying to work out those, things like that, again, and, you know, some folks are frustrated, some understand the challenges and, again, most have been very appreciative of the things we're doing, but again, it's change.
Okay.
And just trying to get them acquainted with the change as well, so we're working through those.
What about the city garbage cans?
So, city garbage cans, I think we discussed...
You talked about it at the parks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are in the contract, we pick them up.
So they're in the hand, pick those up?
Yes. Again, I always just encourage the public, if you have questions, concerns, please call City Hall, let us know. We'll work with you. Tri-county has been just wonderful to communicate with. They've been great. Every time we call with a question or a concern, we call straight back. We have some folks that have about their new cans, so we're sending that list to them and Tri-county will be delivering those. So I do tell those folks that if you didn't get your cans, still put your garbage on your old cans, they'll still pick it up. Because some folks are just holding back thinking, well, they won't take it, but they won't, so.
And also, just to let people know, I'm sure you put it out in the mailers and everything else, that if people have something that's extra large, a sofa or something like that, you call Tri-county directly.
That's correct.
And along with this whole discussion, Councilman Sam Lawson has brought up that we do some, and we agreed after our budget talks, that we're going to do some exploratory on what should we do looking toward our future with garbage.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I got a question. What does the average per month increase? Do you have any idea what, what the average per month increase per, per resident?
Yeah, so, per resident, so I believe, I don't have the exact number with rack and I think it was 18 and some change.
Eighteen forty-two.
And we are up to...
Thirty seventy-five.
Thirty seventy-five, so you're looking at a...
Twelve dollars or something?
Yeah, increase. And folks would have gotten their bill probably yesterday, and we've actually had some folks call and say, hey, what's going on? Why is it up? And, you know, we explain.
There was an insert in the bill with the rate increase as well.
And, and also, we are trying to exercise the performance, or whatever proper terminology you rate, performance bond.
We're making a claim against the performance bond for the, to the extent that we can for the increase in charges and I'm trying to get the attorney for the insurance company to respond to my emails.
Okay. And if that happens, then people will be getting, to what extent we can, of credit in their bills, so. Okay, are we good on that one? We'll move to new business. First thing we have tonight is a crossing guard MOU, which is kind of just like an update. We do this every so often, correct?
Yeah. Yep, this is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school district for crossing guards. So essentially, this memorandum of understanding, with the intersections we have now, the school district has some of their faculty and staff that cover three, three different intersections, so that, that is the school's employees. Essentially, we have, the city has two employees, one that works in the afternoon shift, only one that works morning and afternoon, that is the city employee. We split the wages with the school district for the two that essentially work for the city. Faculty and staff are obviously separate, they get paid through the school. This is, again, just a memorandum, memorandum of understanding. The school district has already signed. Just to note on the, under compensation, it was 725, it's at 750 now.
Okay.
And that's a minimum number of two, 2.5 hours per day while performing their employment duties that are guaranteed.
Do I hear a motion to approve this MOU?
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Which intersections do, do our crossing, do the city's crossing guards?
So our city crossing guards cover Franklin in Main Street and the afternoon shift of Washington in Main.
Okay, so the person that works both morning and afternoon and the person that works just the afternoon, they're both 2.5 hours, like how?
No, actually, the gentleman in the afternoon is just the P, the PM shift.
Half.
Do we have that?
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Cogle?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. The next item on the new business agenda is discussion on the condemned property from 136 to 140 Diamond Street.
Yes, counsel, so also requested for this to be on the agenda as well. This is a property near Bunions and the Diamond. It's been condemned by the City of Titusville for about two years now. It's 136, 138, 140 Diamond Street. Essentially, this building is in dire straits. It's owned by a gentleman out of New York City. Counsel may or may not be aware, this is the same owner that had the structure, this I missy forever, two years ago that we, we took down. Again, this is in front of counsel. Counsel should have received an email from a local businessman who took conservatorship of this property. This, this businessman wanted to put money into a roof. This, the building is falling apart, it's falling down. Half the building is in the basement already, the other half is apartments that are in terrible shape. The roof, we were told by an engineer two years ago, that would probably collapse last year, but it hadn't collapsed yet. So here we are with winter approaching. The local businessman that took conservatorship of this was hoping to get it up to, to at least get a roof on the building, not deal with anything inside, but, but would have an opportunity possibly for some funding in February. Again, it was just to get it through the winter months. This businessman has realized the cost associated with putting a roof on is about $150,000 as a guesstimate, just to put a roof on it. That's not to touch anything inside, of course. This businessman has kind of gotten to the point where he's spent his own money, he's just trying to save the building. Again, it's been condemned for two years. We are kind of at a crossroad here of, last week, the second story window broke out, it fell out on the street, somebody cleaned it up. I got a call from the two business owners on both sides of the condemned building, claiming the rats. We assume are coming from this condemned building. Our code enforcement officer has taken this owner to court. This owner continues to pay the fines, continues to pay the taxes on the property as well. Obviously, our solicitors, solicitor has been involved as well. Actually, there was some pictures I'd love to share with everyone of the condition. You can only imagine what it's in, but holes in the floors, a match it's fries, it's still standing. Again, obviously, with the window falling out last week, it's just a matter of time before the rest of it caves in and it'll become a city problem. That's what I'm sure we'll have to get the bricks off the street. Again, we're in a position where we don't own it. The owner, obviously, has neglected the building, doesn't care. I, I have talked to the businessman, businessman who has conservatorship. He made a last plea for help. I talked to him before I came to the meeting. If folks would be interested in donating money to at least get a roof on it, obviously, it's an option.
Sure.
Otherwise, the code enforcement officer has recommended we just tear it down, which would be less than a hundred thousand.
But would, pardon me?
Which would be less than a hundred thousand to tear it down.
But would be on us.
But would be on, well, the owner right now, but, right, are we going to be in the same boat we were with the other building where we had? The owner got off scat-free, signed it over to us, and we had to pay $120,000 of CDVG money to tear it down. So again, it's, we're...
I don't see it as another property that we want, you know what I mean? That's, that's the sad part, but...
So I, I guess I have a question about conservatorship if there's an owner of the building. So what, how did, I'm not sure how that works. What, what can a conservator do if somebody else owns the building and is paying fines and property taxes?
Okay, I can, we looked into this as well. So what can, what happens is the judge who was looking at a conservator, and what that allows you to do to manage that property, own that property until the lien that you put on that property is paid off. So if I were to have conservatorship, I need to manage that property until my lien that I placed on it is paid off by the owner.
So in other terms, if you put a hundred thousand in the building, then you would have a lien on the building?
Yes.
Okay. So in this discussion, what are our, what are our logical options?
Well, yeah, so we're pretty limited in what we can do. I mean, we, we can board up the building in order to avoid the public nuisance and abate the, the public health hazard or safety hazard. We can continue to, and then, you know, lien the property for those costs. You only get paid then if the property sells or if you file what's known as a British Scary process where your base or your claim, you know, it's on the property owner, you want to get paid on the lien, and then it becomes a judgment against the personal assets. When Neil had first asked me to take a look at this, I wasn't finding much that was going to be helpful. However, I stumbled upon an act, Act 90 of 2010, known as the Neighborhood Blight Reclamation and Revitalization Act, where if we were to investigate that further and adopt an ordinance to implement that act, we would have the ability to place a lien against the personal assets of any owner of real property that is in serious violation of building code or is regarded as a personal nuisance. We could take the property owners to court to seek judgments against their personal assets. This particular property owner has six properties within town, the city, if I'm correct, and we can deny municipal permits to those, to that property owner for any of those properties as a result of the violations at that one property. We can, also, there's a process that we can use to have enhanced criminal violations, filing against these people due to their failure to comply with the code violations and then as a result of that, we would actually have to extradite this individual back into Titusville for a purpose of enforcement actions against that particular individual that's out of state and that's the process we would have to use to do that. Is that aggressive? Absolutely. Is that what this law is written for? Absolutely. And we can investigate that further if you'd like, but we're, we're pretty limited in the tools that we have.
But we need to do our decisions. Can we have that first reading tonight? So we need to, we need to look at that.
We need to look at that and, you know, the Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania is a group that championed this and I would suggest that we reach out to them and see how it's been implemented in the past in other communities and how successful it's been. It's, you know, it's been around now for 12 years, so let's start to find some success stories and see if it's a tool that is going to be useful for Titusville. Is having a private citizen have conservatorship over the building a second muck-up of water section? Well, I believe that that private citizen is looking to relinquish the conservatorship, so I don't think that that would, that private citizen, the new work that he had done in that particular property, he's going to put a lien against that property, that would just be another lien against it that would have to be paid. I'm not sure that we can convert that lien and enforce it for him. Okay. So the city wouldn't be on the hook for that, be, right now? No, the city's not on the hook for that. This would be, if we were to, my, I've been like, it's not just this afternoon. Let me, that was a little bit leading, let me, my, my thought here is, could the city take over the conservatorship? Can you pass that off to the city? Would that free up some of our actions, options, if we had conservatorship on? No. Okay. I don't know what if, all that would do is make you responsible for the building.
Chad, any questions?
No.
Any thoughts, Bill, since you were here for part of it at the beginning?
No, it's been a nice hour for quite a while and we had, we had a lot of, quite a bit of discussion as before. It's the same old story. Your, our hands are pretty much tied right now, but I can't see putting a roof on it in no way. What, what, what good is a roof going to do? It's not saving the inside.
I just don't wa, I just don't want to see us with all the complications that we've had and controversy around what we're trying to do already. I would hate to see us take that on as another project of tearing it down and making it into green space, you know? I, I would like to see it somehow go, convert it to one of the other, some, somebody.
On the other hand, you don't, we don't need to tear down another building in this town. And that's, that's the bad part of it. If anybody else has got any ideas out there, submit, let, let us, let us know.
It's my understanding as well that tearing against clock here.
Yeah.
Um, in that, you know, heavy snowfall has avoided, caused some very serious damage to this building. And if immediate action isn't taken, then it's likely to fail. And unfortunately, government is not set up for immediate action.
Right.
And I'm not so sure if you had the money tomorrow, you're going to find a contractor to put a roof on it two months either. That's the other...
It's gonna, it's gonna take longer, a couple of months to put a roof on.
Yeah, exactly. I'm just concerned we're going to be picking up brick pieces in a whisper.
Okay, so since this is a discussion item, what would council's wishes, what, what are council's wishes? Would, would we like to, would council like for Neil and our solicitor to explore this act? Uh, this, uh, ordinance he talked about that's been around?
Um, yeah, we need more information.
Okay.
Something like that in the draft form, we can view comprehended to, on, to see if this is going to go through.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, is there something in place if nothing happens before winter time? We can put up a barrier over the sidewalk with, is there something for the safety of the people? Your nuisance laws right now are sufficient for you to be able to board it up and do what you need to do to make it safe.
And how do we get reverse from the land?
You file those claims against the property as a lien. And then if you want to act against that lien, we can go to court and act against that lien. What, what happens is when you, when you take those actions to abate a nuisance, you incur costs, say it's a thousand dollars, plywood, whatever it may be. Um, we then file a lien in the court, in the, uh, prosecutor's office against that particular property for those thousand dollars. If you want to collect, that is filed against the property, meaning that it's in rem, right? That's what causes those liens to have to be paid off when the property transfers. If we were to file a British Scary Process, um, and I don't ask what that means in Latin, I have no idea. I would call it the British Scary Faces. Um, we would go and, um, we'd go to court and we'd say, look, we, we, we don't want to hold that lien anymore. We want paid. The property owner would be served, the property owner would be required to file what's known as an affidavit of just defense, where he would claim, um, any just defense he has for not paying that cost. Now, this is not, I don't like it, it's not, I disagree with it, it's, it's not due. That's the just defense. He wouldn't have that claim.
So what is the timeline on that?
We could, within a month or so, a couple of months, we could have that. But what that does for us is it has us, um, transfer that from an in rem judgment against the property to an in persona judgment against the individual. And if that's not paid, we then transfer that to the judgment index where it starts getting their individual credit.
So we can do that within a couple of months of applying for the lien?
If, if we have a lien, well, if we have a lien filed, I can file a British Scary Process that same day.
Okay.
Then, then we're, then we're at the mercy of course of scheduling.
Okay. Everybody happy with our red so far? So we'll have them explore that and get back to us in the next meeting. Next, we have resolution number seven, our CDVG application for two thousand and twenty-two.
Justice Council Resolution of the City of Titusville, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing the submission of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, application by Crawford County to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Development, as authorized under the Housing and Community Development Act, and further certifying compliance with the requirement of said program.
Okay. Everybody has received this electronically, and hopefully everybody understands it. I hear a motion for us to, uh, go forward with this resolution number seven.
I'll make a motion to go forward.
I'll second that.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lobston?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Cocal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. All right, at this time, this is what everybody in the audience have been waiting for. This is the time for public input, five-minute time limit for individual speaker. Just tell us if, what you'd like to talk about and, um, what your connection is to the city.
Oh, why don't I, so well done at once. I'm Stacy, resident, it's been, it's been a while. I know, well, I've been waiting in anticipation of being cocking up, I know. Um, first, since we were talking about Mister from New York, I would implore you to look into that. I mean, I've had my own experiences with him and thanks to his dog. Uh, I guess we're probably the only town that this is happening in that he has, I'm not sure. So I would implore you to look into different things because I think that's great stuff. But I also really wanted to talk to, recommend you all the trash. Uh, because you know, I've kind of been here since the beginning of the trash, with you all. Um, I think it's great. I, yes, people are complaining, and I implore all of them to show up, but, you know, just the three of us that always show up. But, um, I think it's great.
Thank you.
And, um, obviously, I did not grow up here, so I have different experiences with different trash things. Uh, I lived in New York County, but I also lived in the city of Pittsburgh. And I will tell you that the city of Pittsburgh would not give to anything about you complaining about where you need to put your trash can and what your trash can size was, because you need to put it out, that's what it is. And if not, then your trash is getting picked up. And guess what? Recyclables are picked up every other week, and our can was about this big. So I'm just saying that consider yourself very lucky. Um, we have, uh, not only a great city manager that is trying to support the people, um, but also a great council that was able to get this going and get it going fast, and some of our stuff like Union City is. Um, so I just wanted to say that thank you, you guys, good job.
Thank you. You have more time if you have more compliments. I was waiting for the other shit.
I could have, I'm, I'll say, you know, a little...
Anyone else?
Hi there, everyone. Um, my name is Titch Murray, I'm resident of Titusville. Uh, to follow up what she said, one of the things I wanted to talk about was the refuse changes. Just again, that was, uh, we didn't get, get right here, just had that picked up real fast. I know that everybody was, as lucky when I couldn't decide, they had closer towards, all of a sudden, kind of some people hanging, uh, dry. So it's back to, everything's a big cut-up fast, that was good. There's complaints about it, but nonetheless, we have what we have, and that's good that we do. But the main thing I wanted to talk about was the, uh, constable for open parking.
Yes, sir.
I know there's been back and forths on that, and there were just a few things I had a question on, or questioned on. Like, I even realized from the beginning that there was the ideas that, are there streets empty for that have to be, uh, watched for when there's the, uh, winter advisories and stuff like that, correct?
Yes.
So my question is, you plan to alert, uh, the citizens of Titusville when they have to switch, uh, their parking side via, via text, via the website and stuff like that, correct?
All, um, next alert?
Yes.
On our webs, on our website, on our social media, we have a Facebook page.
And obviously, it'll be on a sign with ample notice, not just, hey, you got an hour, you're going to move your car. There'll be ample hours, could be forty-eight hours, that you'll have time to move.
This is temporary signs that we will, temporary signs on the street.
Basically, and this should help explain it. Let's say today is Tuesday, the fourth. Let's say we get a notice, Neil calls me and says, hey, Erie Weather has put out a winter storm advisory starting Friday.
All right.
So I could declare an emergency tomorrow. Then we would put all the alerts out, and hopefully, our public works and everything, all the signs would be out, let's say, by Thursday, so that you would know a day ahead of time that it's alternate parking starts, and it's only for a five-day period.
Okay, yep. As far as when the strong weather shifts, maybe not like a five, ten hours in that day.
No.
Uh, at least a day or like, uh, like a long, uh, way ahead of time notice, and not just like a six, seven hour notice. Because not everybody's going to be able to see that notice, or it's not going to be like something like, uh, just a short notice.
Correct.
And I want to have access to information again, because the big issue is not a, not a, access to online.
Yes.
Access online and stuff like that, so they need that.
Oh, we also ask, we also ask in the, in the stuff, please alert your neighbors. If you have elderly neighbors that you don't think have social media, let them know. And this was in lieu of, and this is growing pains, but this was in lieu of having blocks of three months, four months, or five months of alternate parking. Through a lot of research, and Sam actually went up and down a lot of the streets and counted houses and went by national averages on cars, and we thought this was the least intrusive to be able to keep the city safe and get our, our public works could do their job.
All right. Um, then another question ahead on is just how does this affect people who are handicapped and like that, who, uh, like specifically have designated spots? Uh, like is, there's still a predicament or no predicament involved in that?
Actually, we've been having this conversation, and the plan is if you have a handicap parking street, uh, parking spot on your, this is in the plum area, but this is what the goal is going to be, you're going to get a handicap on the opposite side of the street as well.
Okay.
There's one, how many we, do we, six or eight we have right now?
Probably, I, I couldn't give you an exact number.
We're looking at stream line, we're looking at clarifying that, the language in that ordinance right now. So that's something that's going on with that part of it.
All right, yep.
Excellent, excellent questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we're good.
You guys are great.
Well, the gentleman visiting tonight, at least, uh, tell us who you are, the newspaper.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm here to say, all right, I'm helping out the council during their transition.
Welcome, welcome.
I was a neighbor, I don't know Neil.
Okay. Thank you. Well, tonight, we'll close with comments by mayor and council and junior council, and we'll start out with, our junior council will start out with, uh, Aiden.
Uh, all I'd like to say right now is it's good to be here and I'm ready to learn and get involved.
Okay.
Same here.
Okay. And with, uh, council, we'll start with our newest reenactment.
Yeah, uh, I just got one little, I'm going to give you one little story, being back on council once again. Uh, about a month ago, we, my wife and I were traveling to Erie, and we noticed in Union City, remember the old diner used to be in Union City on the corner?
Yes.
They were tearing that down. And we went to Erie that day, and we come back that evening, and it was down. And I just had to say to my wife, I said, whoa, I'm going to compare this demolition to the green space that we have downtown. Who's going to get, who's going to go first and get it done? So last week, I had to go to Erie to the hospital, and coming back, here's a nice, beautiful brick wall. The fence is down, the brick wall's up. My wife looked at me, she goes, huh, you lost. But I mean, I'm just, I'm just want to compare, you know? We're going to start on the green space, which has been a pain in the butt, not to say the least, but, uh, not to say that Union City's ahead of us.
Is it privately owned or whether?
No, so that's property that, um, was acquired by the, um, Union City Pride, which is their redevelopment, uh, nonprofit redevelopment, uh, partner. They received sufficient grant funds in order to bring that property down, redesign it, um, they put the wall up. There's going to be a gateway in Union City that is going to be placed there, um, in the next construction season. And, um, uh, I can assure you, Mr. McCrillis, that it's been about a year and a half in the making. It just didn't happen overnight.
Well, anyhow, look good to me, going on. So we're looking, I'm looking forward to the green space.
I'll pass your comments along to your neighbors.
All right, thank you. But they still don't have garbage, like Sam.
First of all, I'd like to make sure we welcome, welcome to the show. Um, we had a great time out here. We're looking forward to use your folks' input and participation. Zach and Phil, welcome back.
Thank you.
Uh, looking forward to working with you. Um, as far as city business goes, I think we're pretty much good. We've got our hands kind of full with going in our budget season, so looking forward to all that. Junior council, welcome to the show. Jesse, enjoy it. Bill, welcome back to the show.
Thank you.
I look forward to listening to you on council, instead of on the other side of this town, so.
Well, you probably did it again, so.
Okay. Deputy?
Uh, so I'm going to reiterate the welcome to everybody, uh, as well. So I look forward to working with, uh, junior council, not only here, but also, uh, at the high school with, uh, the other students and getting those input meetings, uh, up and rolling. Um, hopefully in a couple of weeks here, before our next meeting. Um, and, um, want to encourage the public to attend budget meetings. We get a lot of questions about things that pertain to the budget throughout the year. Why don't we do this, or that, or whatever? Um, so I encourage people to come and see, you know, what the budget looks like and why we, we can't do some of those things, uh, even though we, we might like to in some of the choices that are made. So, um, you know, it's, there, everyone is open, uh, and, and unfortunately, we don't see too many people there, so.
Okay, for me tonight, uh, welcome junior council, who had some good interviews with them earlier tonight. Hearing a little bit about them, we look forward to hearing input back from the school. Um, we joked that we lost our thirty-something on council, and now our, uh, average age up here is back up to at least thirty-five. And, uh, uh, welcome back, Bill. Nice to have you back on council. Um, last night was the first budget work session that Bill missed in three years. And, uh, so he'll be back on our budget sessions for, for the third year in a row and approving a budget, hopefully. Thank you for all the work that council's been doing here on our, making it to the budget work session last night. We listened to all the department heads. Thanks, Neil, for what you're doing. Thanks for being here tonight, Tim, and Heather, for what you do. But, um, the only thing I'll say, and nobody paid me to put this plug in, but we do have an Oktoberfest coming up this weekend, if, for those of you who work too hard and need to relax a little bit on Saturday. And, um, have a good couple of weeks till we're back again. Would, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Call the roll, please, we're just five minutes over.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lobston?
Yes.
Mr. Cocal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.